We have a moment of silent meditation and flix to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to order, this meeting of Monkey County Commission for July 15th, 2020. We have Commissioner Bloom and myself in the room, and Commissioner Sakura is on the phone, so all Commissioners are present. We'll begin with consent and approval. Renata, good morning.
Good morning. We have 37 exonerations for $17,980.74, one request to create a statement for $1,428.72. Vouchers for General County Fund, $511,580.18, worthless check cash, $40.24, 911, 42610, Chestnut Ridge Park, $255.30, Camp Muffley, $579.55, Mason Dixon Park, $650.20, Transportation Levy, $25,492.96, Fire Levy, $61,409.16, Recreation Levy, $57,719, Library Levy, $6,256.56, Assessor's Valuation, $13,291.20, Purchasing Card vouchers, $44,699.90, Coal Severance, $43.84, Magistrate Court, $29.86, Assessor's Valuation, $1,0891.91, for voucher total of $723,735.96. We have a budget revision required for the Coal Severance Fund to include the carryover, which was $15,942, that those funds will be directed to the contingency fund inside Coal Severance. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, the Mon County Planning Commission, Monkey County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Abandon and Dilapidated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region Six Planning and Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, and Mountaineer Trail Network Authority. Judiciary orders for July 15th, 2020.
Move for approval. Second, been properly moved and second for approval, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Introduction of new employees and personnel changes. Patrick?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, National Commission hired Ms. Brenda Hawkins. Ms. Hawkins-
Thank you.
Is a personal property deputy, she's replacing Ms. Sylvia Fox, who left us a few weeks ago. Ms. Hawkins' first day will actually be July 27th, she couldn't be here with me this morning. She'd be full-time, benefit-eligible with a 90-day introductory period. All right, any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved and second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
For the record, this person is not related to Commissioner Hawkins. I don't want to think that nepotism occurs just simply to clarify that fact, okay? Are there any other introductions of new employees?
Carrie, did you want me to bring the chair down? Because I don't want you standing.
No.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Good. We will now open for comments from the public. You are free to speak, come forward, identify yourselves, you will have three minutes, I do time you, people know that I do do this, so.
Good morning, my name is Steve Reese, I'm the owner of Mason Jar Saloon and the Mason Jar Barbecue and Catering, both in Mon County. I'm representing all small business owners here in this county, not just bars and restaurants. We feel like we've been targeted out, but not just by the county, but by the state as well. We feel like that we have been preached at and preached at about how growing this virus is, just in this county, and our governor has been bashed and bashed and bashed from this county, and now our target, his target is this county. We feel like there's been numbers put out that wasn't accurate, we feel like they've been elevated, the hospitals, for example. Today, we just received a thing from the CEO of Ruby, there's now five total cases that's admitted in that hospital from this virus, that it's affected with the virus, has been admitted, and over the weekend, this town was on hysteria. Right now, I talked to local people in Saberton area, it's like a ghost town over there. People are scared to death in this town now because of this. We gotta be accurate with what we're putting out, we can't be scaring our community to death. We all rely on this community to survive, and now the government's targeting us, they very, this whole county's being targeted. We wish that WVU not come back to session this fall, hopefully they'll move it to spring, because we're afraid the governor's going to close us clear down when our numbers go up, and if you bring that many students back to this county, there's no choice but the numbers to go up. We cannot win that battle. So we're asking you guys to help us with that fight, we want you to help us with the Health Department as well. I brought some attentions to Tom, Mr. Bloom, earlier. I was out at an event outside, and the Health Department shows up, and they tell my girl working outside at a register in my food trailer that she must on a mask, which is not at all what the governor's order said. I assume that's what we're still following. So I went and got her a mask, I took the gentleman aside, and I said, "She has an underlying health issue, and now you told her that she must wear a mask." That is illegal through the ADA, it's unsafe for her. If anything happened to her, who's going to be responsible for that woman? People's not thinking about these things, they're just pointing fingers and assuming. There's a lot of safety issues that's going on with this, we're trying to comply to things. Every one of us wants to be open, at full capacity. We're happy with the 50% right now because we're still open, but we're afraid that's not going to last. So we need everybody to help us, and please, try to quit scaring the community to death. I know this is a serious thing, but we can't change it. One person's not going to change it, and one community's not going to change it, because they're going to come from everywhere. You know, just like right now, they closed Mon County down, where's everybody going to go? They're going to Marion County, they're going to Preston County, they're going to Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
We're losing it all.
Thank you.
And that's-
We've got others that want to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next.
My name is Louis Scotchel, I represent Classics in Saberton. So I'm kind of on board with Steve here, but my biggest concern is WVU and the students coming back. 30,000 students, we cannot handle this, and our economy is nothing if we get shut back down. Those 30,000 students in this county, they don't do anything for us with the numbers rising. We're 31, I think we're 31 cases above Berkeley County, and we got singled out. Berkeley County, everybody knows, is over by the DC metro area, and you know Martinsburg, and they've got a little bit bigger population, but with our population of the county, along with the 30,000, we overcome that population of Berkeley County. With only 31 cases above them right now, that number will climb drastically, and whenever that happens, we'll be shut back down, and I expect a three-to-six month shutdown, which we can't afford. I told Mr. Bloom and other elected officials that we can't afford the shutdown that we have now. We're losing out on pool tables, we're losing out on jukebox money, we're losing out on other profits that help us pay other bills, and we can steal from that to pay for other things. Ghost town, from 5:00 last night to about 9:00 last night, I monitored outside, I probably saw a total of 10 cars go by our business. People are literally scared to death to come out. Now, they're coming out and getting to-go food, but they're not coming in and dining like they were. They aren't coming out and spending the extra money that they had, a lot of people don't have it right now because of that. The extra $600 a month, it's going to be gone. There's not going to be any more money to help us survive, and that's what people don't understand, and I think that that's what people need to see, is all that extra money that was given out is gone. We have no choice, if you shut us down again, we're done. There's no way we're going to be able to survive this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Lou Senior, Scotchel Senior, owner of Golden Blue Restaurant, doing business at Classics III Saberton. My biggest concern is that I think that it's time for the professionals in the medical field and the Health Department to be able to answer questions. We're into this, what, five months, four, five months? And I called the Health Department last week when we had a concern, whenever there was people floating around and the virus was hitting, and we had an employee that possibly got it, and one did have it, but wasn't working, and didn't work for about a week, but we shut down following the guidelines that they had in place now. We shut down, we had everybody tested, and until their tests came back, we didn't reopen. We reopened with a skeleton crew because we don't have the employees to be able to come back because they haven't get their tests back yet. When the governor shuts down a county, does he not realize that it's better appropriately put, that why don't he make more restrictions on if you're sick, feverish, have anything, and you're caught out, you're going to be fined? You're the one that's going to pay the penalties because you're the one that's spreading this disease. Not shut the businesses down, the university is going to bring in people from how many different states? Nobody knows that control yet until they do it, analysts, but how many of those states have elevated COVID virus that has the symptoms and everything? But what I'm trying to say is, there's got to be a different way to approach this, and it should be minimal to any business. And I know that the only ones that I see on the news are downtown businesses. Well, yes, they get flooded with students, let's face it, and they're, they're the ones dying the most at this time without that student population. They're losing revenue after revenue after revenue, but those kids are not going to be responsible. We were kids, and we know how far, how invincible we felt, no matter who we were. You never think that you're going to get sick enough to hurt anything, or, but, so, you see what I'm saying? I think you get the point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Looks so different with masks on. Cliff Sutherland, Triple S and the Gateway, I just wanted to, I was on the website for the state yesterday, Department of Highways, and I have some concerns about the progress of the much-needed lane addition from 73 to seven, or, excuse me, 153 to 155 exit, that redesign, the Chaplain Hill Road, and also the flyover in front of Sheets. Originally, it was supposed to be bonded, I believe, in March and in June, and it seems to have gone away, and we obviously approved it, Tiff District, and there's a lot of construction going on, and if that construction is delayed on the roads, the traffic is going to be detrimental, and I was just wondering if we could do something to get some answers. I've actually contacted the state and have received no follow-up. That's all I've got.
Okay, next. We're in public session, do you have a public comment? For those who just entered the room.
Your, I'm sorry, your question again?
Not a question, we're in public comment session right now. If you have a public comment, or do you-
You can come down, that's, we didn't know.
You have, you have three minutes to speak if you're making a public comment. Do you choose to make a public comment?
Yeah.
You probably want to make a public comment.
Yeah, you just walked in, we didn't know.
You go ahead, you guys can go up and speak, we've already spoken. If you have your business or any other concern-
Yeah. We wanted to make sure you had that, that opportunity.
How are you doing, Paul?
Good. Well, it's been better.
Okay, if you're making comment, please identify yourself, and you have three minutes to speak, okay?
How are you doing, Ron and Sarah Beth Ballasser? We are the owners of Whitetail Crossing up on Grafton Road, a bar, restaurant-type ordeal. So of course, we have a few complaints. Number one, in reference to the 10-day shutdown of all bars, of course, by the looks of things and by a bunch of y'all's comments, 90% of this is coming from downtown, the ages of 20 to 29. We got WVU and Full Access going full speed, you know, all of us are paying the price. I have no college students at my place, but I'm shut down. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, I mean, we've been doing everything by the, it's actually safer in my restaurant than it is anywhere downtown. I mean, my seats are six feet apart, people social distance. I walk downtown, it's a nightmare, and we're bringing all these students back in town, and we're all paying the price for it. I do not rely on college students for anything. I just all happen to be, I guess, in the wrong county, you know, I mean, this is, I know a bunch of people take headed to Fairmont to go eat and drink and have fun, so shutting down one county, I'm not sure exactly what that did. I mean, they're just going to go elsewhere, they're going to go to Fairmont, they're going to hang out, they're going to get drunk, they're going to come back here, and they're, you know, it's, it's just, it's just not doing anything. I mean, I really feel that our bars and our, and the setups that we have provided are actually safer than what's going on, but yeah, we're paying the price. And then I have another complaint. Going up and down through town, you know, years back, I didn't see all of this, and we have different people in, in office in different places, I just picked out like nine, 10, 15 homeless drugs laying on the streets, on Stewart, laying on, on the high street, down here at the park. I mean, you guys have pretty much directed us to take our asses outside, stay in the sun, stay in the air, social distance, and I got to walk down by a park where there's a bunch of drugies down there with needles hanging the ground, and, you know, we just seem like we're going completely backwards downtown here. That's my complaints.
Thank you.
Did you want to add to that?
Did you want to speak? You're more than welcome to.
I think you covered everything.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, I see.
Thank you. Are there any others who wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, we will close, comments from the public, thank you. May I suggest the rules to make a statement?
And then to see if Shaun Two wanted to speak, go ahead.
Yes, please. So that the public is aware, this was not a directive that was initiated by a commission, so the public is aware, obviously, this is a county commission, a city problem cannot be addressed by a county commission. We try and do the very best we can on our properties, but on other properties, that is not within our daily whip. We did meet, and I will go over this briefly, we did meet on Monday, all the municipalities, and sent forth to the governor, we did not request a shutdown. What we requested was a different proposal. Our proposal is still on their table, but the governor is the individual at the state level that instituted this shutdown. It was through no undue influence of this body or each municipality, WVU, Board of Education, everybody that was here, the Board of Health, all agreed to ask for a mandatory masking. This is something that this body, myself included, those of you who don't know me before, my, my name is also Dr. Ed. I practiced dentistry for 40 years, I do know epidemiology, I do know infection control, and we had advocated for at least seven to eight weeks that mandatory masking be instituted so that we could remain safer and not be facing what we're facing. Shaun, do you have anything?
No, I reserve my comments for our closing response.
All right, thank you.
I do appreciate the Scotchels, we've been having conversations, especially the last 48 hours, and I appreciate you coming in, it's real easy to be on others, be on Facebook and complain, but not be willing to come forward, and I think, I think you're exactly right. Our concern was, and has always been, that if we shut down the businesses, especially the smaller businesses, that the only one who benefits are a couple of large businesses, and I'm very, very worried about that, and that's what happened last time. The other problem being that I'd rather, as was stated, deal with a scalpel than, you know, a sledgehammer in trying to deal with the situation, I think that's what you're all saying, working together to try and come up with some sort of solutions. We had no, we were shocked, to be very honest, we were shocked when they came with the situation on the bars. We believed it was going, we thought it might happen, but it did happen. I do want you to know that as of 10:00, and I just got the text, that our numbers now have gone up to 604 positive, Berkeley is at 5:30, and they used to be about 200 people above us. We also have those 2,800 people that will be announced, that was going to be stated. I guess the concern is, we will need your help in working together and trying resolving this issue. It will be up to the governor, we will be talking with them in the next couple of days, and hopefully, we can deal with it. With the WVU students, we're going to wait to see what happens, because I know they are talking with the governor at this time, everything's open, and I know that the school population has moved back to September 8th, so, again, we will do everything we can, I think all three county commissioners are adamant, to keep our businesses open, and you were correct, there is no federal money this time, but I will say this, the governor has $1.2 billion in the CARE Act. If we're going to be shut down, I'd like to know what money is going to come here to give him work with us and the businesses, and I think that's a legitimate question, and I'll end it.
Thank you, and I, the, before I became a dentist, I was also an English major, and I will apologize for my commissioner's analogy, what he meant to say is better to use a scalpel than a butcher knife, not a hammer, okay?
Well, sorry. In Philadelphia, it's a-
Colleen, do we have grants?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Col.
That's all right.
You just made yourself a target.
I have a grant for persons, the first one is for the Emergency Management Prepartness Grant in the amount of $115,911. I also have the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $817.47. The Governor's Highway Safety Program, Safe Communities, in the amount of $1,680.35, and the VOCA Grant in the amount of $4,623.51.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved and second for approval, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Correspondents?
Yesterday, via email, I received the Financial Performance Report for the Transit Authority for the month of June 2020, and that is all.
Okay, good. Any unfinished business?
And, and I have, well-
Yes, oh, do you have a correspondence, Shaun? Please, please go ahead.
To the record, we all received an email from Matt Dreher, the general manager of the Black Bears, asking for some assistance, and I just requested if we put that on a future work session.
Okay, so be it. Any unfinished business? Hearing, hearing none, we'll move on to new business. First, to consider a request by Monkey County Assessor's Office for use of the Courthouse Square on, I'm sorry, my glasses fogged, July 20th and July 24th, 2020. Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved and second for approval, all in favor? Aye.
Aye, and for those who don't know, this is for the Saddle Lane property filing drop-offs.
Next, consideration of requisition number 43 for the University of Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisition is for $316,600.99, collections for the month of May.
Move to approve requisition 43 as presented?
Second.
Been properly moved and second to approve, all in favor? Aye.
Just to confirm, this is the regular movement of funds, less the 100K statutory requirement.
To consider for approval the option to renew the contract with West Virginia University for processing and transportation services to the North Central Regional Jail for individuals arrested by the WVU Police Department for the period of January 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2021. Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved and second for approval, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of appointment to the West Virginia Route 2-I-68 Authority.
Dr. Ed Nelson Bernardes is currently serving, he would like to be reappointed, we have not received any other-
Move for approval.
Move, second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. To consider supplemental funding request from Visit Mountaineer Country Convention and Visitors Bureau, I'll explain this, we have discussed that to make sure that we can get the Convention Bureau back to a more secure footing, the county commission normally would take half of the money that comes in, and at a 6%, if you're on the hotel motel tax, so the motion, I would hope, would be that we would suspend taking our 3% and enable the Convention Bureau to take the entirety of the 6%, we feel that, and this would be for a three-month period, and then reviewed at the end of the three-month period.
Shaun, did you want to speak? I know you-
I move, I move that we provide additional supplemental funding to the Visit Mountaineer Country Convention and Visitors Bureau by increasing their allotment for the next three months from 50% to 100% of collected taxes from county hotel motel entities, after which time we reevaluate funding going forward.
Second, did you want to speak to it?
Any discussion?
We had, well, yes, I will speak. We had a number of meetings regarding this, and again, this is kind of a common sense approach, the chicken and egg argument is, in order to get things up and moving again, the CBB needs their staff. They've been basically working on a skeleton crew, and I appreciate everything that Susan Riddle has done in her capacity as executive director herself, working at a decreased monetary level, and working with her partners to keep the CBB running. They presented a number of alternatives which would allow them to phase in the additional staff, bringing additional staff back, and this method allows them to evaluate and as they get the collections every month, be able to act appropriately in regards to staffing of the CBB. And again, Susan, thank you, I appreciate all you do for this county, these towns, this region.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Passes. Reports from elected officials. I'm going, Carrie? Sorry, you were behind the post.
Oh, that's okay.
You were strategically positioned.
I just wanted to come before you and ask your, a request for your approval for our office to make a reimbursement application to the Secretary of State's office for some of our election expenses due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They are trying to get that wrapped up this week, and it was brought to my attention yesterday, that we needed to get those reimbursement requests in, and in reviewing the paperwork, it does require a commissioner's signature, so I wanted to bring it up here this morning so that while you were in session, you all could make a motion to approve these, our application to get reimbursed.
So it has to be in this week?
Yeah.
Okay, well, due to the, I mean, I don't mind if we'll suspend the rules that we put that on to immediately move to sign that form so it can be sent in.
Okay.
Just a second.
Second. Okay, been properly moved and second for approval, all in favor? Aye. Carrie, do you have any other reports?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would ask, since, is Susan still here?
She left.
She left, I'm sorry. Jimmy, do you have any report?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing none, reports from county commissioners, Shaun?
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, we had our development committee meeting, and then on Friday, we had staff reports. As Tom mentioned, this Monday, we had a special meeting, I appreciate all the, all the people that did come out for attendance, we have represented some of the municipalities, the WVU, the Health Department, and I think we have, and I appreciate this, and especially want to mention the work that was done by Perry DeCristo, our county prosecutor, to help pull together some language that we sent out to Charleston.
Today's a regular, regular meeting day, very light agenda with the, I believe, IT staffs in our only work session item today. Tomorrow, I have a Mountain Park Executive Committee meeting, a red team meeting, and then in the afternoon, Dr. Smith called me yesterday, the state health officer wants to meet with the county commission, the mayor of Morgantown, and I believe he may be inviting a few other people to have a conversation with our new state health officer. So, and I believe that'd be a good opportunity for us to put a lot of these concerns that have been raised today, at today's meeting, front and center with, with, with our Friday staff reports. So, again, I appreciate everybody's coming in to talk in regards to the concerns over the current COVID crisis. Believe me, we are trying to keep abreast of this, but this is, things are changing and moving very rapidly. We, at least for now, we do have consensus in our community in regards to getting everybody together and on the same page, and sending a clear message to Charleston as to what the tools we need to help combat this crisis. Now we just need Charleston to work with us in, in any, any way possible to help implement some of these suggestions. Also, Cliff Southern, I echo, and the commission has echoed your concern about the lack of progress on exit 155. You're right, that wasn't supposed to be bonded a long time ago. We're being told that a lot of the problems is in the prime phase, and we do expect some movement soon, but it hasn't been soon enough for, for the citizens of Mon County. And lastly, I just again want to sincerely point out to our citizens the value that we have in our current health, health department director, Dr. Smith. He's very uniquely qualified to guide us through this pandemic here, both being a lawyer and a doctor. And we're lucky to have, we have, we, and I believe that the state health officer recognizes that, and one of the first things she did was reach out to him and, and to have a conversation with us. So, I appreciate everything Dr. Smith is doing, him and his staff. I know they're, they've been, they're burnt out. They're, you know, they're doing everything they can just to keep up with this, and I hope that somehow we can get some relief to them soon in the way of having our numbers stop increasing. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Susan, would you care to speak? We're still in reports. We had gone to commissioners, but I was going to recognize you, and you had stepped out of the room. Would you care to come forward and give a short, short report? Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Susan Riddle from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I wanted to thank the commissioners for the support that you continue to give us. I got this morning most recent report, and our occupancy does continue to trickle on its way northward in comparison to where it was, so that's a good thing. All of our properties, I know, as well as our hospitality partners, even some that are represented here are working very hard. We're working, now, we brought some staff back on Monday. We have two people back, and we'll be exploring that as we go forward with your all's assistance. We're going to be working really hard at getting our Commitment to Safety Program out amongst the community so that we're able to assist with our community as a whole, to welcome people in the long run, and actually, all of us get to a positive place on the other side of this. So we thank you very much, and if there's anything that, that you need, you just let us know. We'll be back and be getting, giving additional updates as things progress as requested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don?
Yeah. I personally want to thank my colleagues, people I don't think really understand what we were able to accomplish Friday afternoon or Friday evening. The governors had made some comments, the commissioners got together by phone, we didn't have a meeting, to set up a meeting on Monday with all the other elected officials, and within three hours, we not only came up with a, two plans, but also funds to, or, we were then able to send those off to the governor. Given the benefit of the doubt, it was right before he spoke, so he did not have the time to see the recommendations. We are hoping that he will take those recommendations seriously. I agree with Sean, we are meeting tomorrow, since he stated it, to discuss a number of issues, and I think with the business people here, I think you've made it very clear, the concern, and I think you represent the majority of the businesses, that if you shut down, and I look at it again, I can only imagine the hotel motels again, what's going to happen? Because if we shut down, the people aren't here, they aren't going to your businesses, and we have a serious problem. With that being said, I can't stress enough that we need everyone in this community, whether, to drop your political rhetoric, and one thing, we need to social distance, we need to wash our hands, and we need to wear masks. If we do this, it will work. But we need everyone to work together, and the businesses, unfortunately, we're the ones who are going to you because you're probably the ones who can help us out. But at the same time, I think also, as I said, the governor has $1.2 million in CARE Act. I'd rather see that money, if you're going to put 100 million into potholes, let's put it into the businesses here and offer incentives to help offset the problems. I think that's something that we, all three of us will pass on. So I do, I do want to say that, I do want to say one other, at least, positive news. Yes, the situation downtown is very disconcerting. We have passed that on as the three commissions, we have sent the pictures. We agree with you. And if you had more businesses open, you would have more people downtown, which would probably resolve some of the issues. The more the businesses close, that's what we're going to see, and that's what we also are going to pass on to the governor. We're very worried about that, and a strong downtown is important for everyone's business. But I will end with a positive note, that we have been meeting the task force on homeless, and we have agreed with the, the owners of that property, of the encampment, that it will be closed down on July 18th, and on the 19th, will be cleaned, and we'll have a walkthrough. So that encampment will be over. We have the 25 people who have been dealt with that were there, and those who've come in since have several options that we are going to offer to them. So we're not just throwing them out. We have other options for them. So I want to thank the West Virginia Coalition in Homelessness and Bartlett House, and those other individuals that worked with us to do that. So I would like to end on a positive then. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've said more than once, speaking last only means you're going to repeat what went on before. However, I did on Thursday attend the swearing-in of our new magistrate, Ron Bane, by Chief Judge Cindy Scott. I want to commend everybody who came to the meeting on Monday. I didn't know Sunday evening what to anticipate, to chair a meeting of every municipality, WVU, the representatives of Mon Health and WVU Medicine, Mon County School Board, and all of our delegates, as to what I might be facing. What I was pleasantly surprised and see was a complete workability of all the parties involved, staying on the point of the discussion and putting forth the plan that we did. Now that our plan was perhaps a little bit too late to be reviewed by the governor, again, the benefit of the doubt is given out there. We, in no intent, as I spoke before, had a part of that plan to shut businesses down. Our intent was simply to make sure that the safety issue was first being observed, and after that was to mandate the mask. As a health professional, I wore masks during my career, gloves, protective gear, face shield, and I'm quite used to it. It does deal with infection control. So I'm hoping that the advocacy of wearing the mask with a penalty. I'm sorry, but the fact that you ask people to do something usually results in some compliance, but not in full compliance, and we need compliance. We need this to be able to bring our numbers up, actually lower our numbers down, I'm sorry, so that we can say, look, it's working, it's positive. We'll be stressing this tomorrow, I believe, with the meeting with the new DHHR director. I don't know, I'm, I'm hoping that what we get with, with the help of our health department, we have two great healthcare systems here. I think what we could stress is, let's look and see if it works for this period of time. Now, I don't know what we're going to get. I hope I don't get the preconceived notion, and I think that's what happened with the governor, that basically, I believe he has, he, his intent, or mine, was made up to do what he was going to do, and our input of only being there for an hour was not time enough for him to digest. And let's hope that that is what's going to happen. You know, I, I really think that we do have, you know, we've got, we've got great advocates here, and I appreciate all of you coming forth. So, I did try and explain this yesterday on the, on the radio show. I don't know, sometimes when you're, you know, when you're talking live, just like I'm talking now, you don't know exactly how your words are going to be received, but trust me, there is sincerity, and there will be sincerity tomorrow when we're meeting either by conference, phone, Zoom, I don't know, you know, if they said drive to Charleston, I'll drive to Charleston. We had actually requested to meet with the previous director and our, and our health department director, Dr. Smith, because we felt that, quite frankly, this area was being ignored by the state, that we could really do a lot better if we could get cooperation from the state level. So that's what we're going to be seeking. We're not going to be seeking an adversarial, we're going to be seeking cooperation that hopefully the state will work with, work with us on our proposals. That being said, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned.